Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the City Council to order. Madam City Clerk, is there a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Madam City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Please stand, and Councilman Rosansky will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing, and I will do the indication.
Please join me in the pledge for our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Lord, we, your servants, gather tonight to do the people's business. We ask your blessings upon our endeavors. We ask for wisdom and compassion and caring as we look over our community, that we would deal fairly and justly with all who are residents of Newport Beach. Watch over and protect our city, in your name we pray. Amen. Let me invite Ms. Elizabeth Nguyen to come forward, along with a representative of the Disney Organization. We have a very impressive young lady with us tonight. Pamela and I were honored to be at the Disney Resort for the presentation of the Disneyland Resort Scholarships, and I'm going to read this proclamation, but before I do, let me ask Danielle from the Disney Organization, perhaps she has some comments to make?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you very much. My name is Danielle Dubois. I'm one of the Disneyland Resort ambassadors, and I also was lucky enough to be at the resort for the awards ceremony last week, and that the mayor joined us at, in honor of Elizabeth and nine other Orange County high school seniors who received our Disneyland Resort Scholarship. And the scholarship we've given, the scholarships we've given since 2006, in $5,000 increments to graduating seniors who show excellence in both academics and in community service. So, a minimum requirement is a 3.0 GPA and 100 hours of service to a nonprofit within the last 12 months. And it goes without saying that all of our recipients really outdo those numbers. And Elizabeth was one of them. This year, actually, we did something special. It is the 55th anniversary of Disneyland this year, and in honor of that, we actually changed the scholarships to be a $5,500 scholarship, which we announced that night, which was very exciting for all the recipients, I hope. So, and I'll let Elizabeth talk about what she does, but we're so excited to honor her and also very thankful to the city for also recognizing here, her, here in her town, and making it official business. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me read the proclamation first, Elizabeth, and then we'll invite you to make a few comments, and we'll come down and take some pictures. Whereas any member of the community can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through community service organizations such as schools, churches, or not-for-profit organizations, and whereas on a daily basis volunteers work in their communities utilizing their time and talent to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly, and whereas Elizabeth Nguyen volunteers for her community because it encourages empathy for others and helps them become caring and compassionate person that she wants to be. And whereas one of Elizabeth Nguyen's proudest achievements is her five years of service with the California Youth Advocacy Network, an anti-tobacco organization, the CYAN, and whereas Elizabeth Nguyen created fact sheets, delivered presentations, and facilitated training to educate youth and adults about the harmful effects of tobacco, she also helped organize CYAN's annual Youth Quest in Sacramento, which alerted assembly members and state senators, television news services, audiences at home, and teenagers throughout the state to the dangers of tobacco use. And whereas the City of Newport Beach recognizes the value of volunteers and proudly joins the Disneyland Resort in congratulating this volunteer in receiving the Disneyland Resort Scholarship, celebrating community service, now I therefore, Keith D. Curry, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby and recognize and honor Elizabeth Nguyen of Corona Del Mar High School for being the recipient of the Disneyland Resort Scholarship.
Thank you for the recognition. It means a lot to me.
Notice to the public, Madam City Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilmember Diggle?
Hi. Yes, about a week or so ago, the city held a forum at the library, and we had about 75 to 80 seniors attend, and the idea was to try to connect them with social service, veterans, Medicare, Medi-Cal, and other agencies and providers. And I want to thank Congressman John Campbell. It was his office that really came up with a lot of the agencies and the programs. And I shared with him some of the conclusions, and that is that this year, there's been a record run on Social Security. Some of it is due to lots of 62-year-olds that in prior years may have delayed receiving their Social Security benefits until age 67 are now cashing in, and just the demographics of people getting older. The concept of the forum which our Public Information Officer promoted and was very helpful in publicizing is, can the city, working with the county and feds, publicize social service benefits for our seniors? And I think down the line, there would be opportunities at our new seniors center to extend this forum and to have speakers come in from veterans and from Medicare. All the seniors that attended were very engaged and attentive for over two hours and asked a whole bunch of questions, so it was very meaningful and rewarding, and I appreciate the support, and I know the seniors found it very helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Yes, Saturday, June 5th, is the Corona Del Mar 5K. This is one of the really fun events. Even if you're not a runner, there's a walk, the kids have a dash, and there's great food, although after running a 5K, I don't know why you really want to eat, but still, there's a terrific food court there. So, Saturday, June 5th, and you can go online with the city to sign up.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Selich?
Yes, I have one. Going to be a busy weekend, because this weekend, June 6th, is the 17th Annual Balboa Island Parade. It's a tradition that started with the opening of the fire station on Balboa Island 17 years ago. It's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. As I've said before, it's the only parade where the parade is longer than the parade route itself. It just goes down Marine Avenue from Bayside Drive to Park Avenue. That's, I wrote this myself, three blocks of good old-fashioned fun. I think my wife's PR background's rubbing off on me. The theme this year is family, friends, and fun. It's an island tradition filled with children on bikes, island dogs, decorated golf carts and floats, vintage cars, Keystone Cops, drill teams, marching bands, and much more. And special treat, city council members will be riding in open cars along with other local dignitaries. It's the Balboa Island way of welcoming summer to all. So, come on down to Marine Avenue and join the folks from Balboa Island for a special day with family, friends, and fun. And remember, the bridge closes to automobile traffic at 10 o'clock, so get there early. That's June 6th, the Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen?
One more time with emphasis, Ed. I did want to make mention of the fact that the city once again completed a tremendous demonstration of the generosity and energy of the citizens of Newport Beach by supporting Relay for Life, Newport Harbor High School, another very successful event. I understand that it raised in excess of $120,000 this year, which I believe is more than, or at least equal, to what it raised last year despite the tough economic environment. Your city council also participated with a team, the Council Critters.
I spent the night in a tent, sleeping bag.
Councilwoman Gardner was a real trooper, and Councilman Ed Selich really led the way with a great event on Balboa Island. And for me, I'm still getting money in. I've got a check for $500 here that just arrived today that I'll need to find a home for with the American Cancer Society. It's a great event.
Mike, do you have information where we send that? Because I also have some more money coming in.
You know, I'll have to find out.
Okay.
Because I just got this yet today. So, in any event, the money's still rolling in, and anyone that still wants to make a contribution is certainly encouraged to do so. It's a great charity, and it was a great event. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. You know, in addition to the Relay for Life, let me just share with you some of the other things that happened in our community during the last week. First of all, I think great congratulations and kudos go to the Newport Beach Exchange Club for organizing the Field of Honor in Castaways Park. I think everybody who had the opportunity to go there was very, very moved by seeing all of those flags that displayed in the park and the support that the community showed for our veterans and those who are serving on active duty in the military. On Saturday, Sunday a week ago, I had the occasion to welcome to Newport Beach the participants of the Newport Beach Jazz Festival, more than 5,000 people, most of them from out of town who are in town, filling our hotels and enjoying great weather in Newport Beach. We also had a tremendous outpouring at the Balboa Art Walk. We opened our CNG facility, which we now have available to the public and to fleet vehicles, at a nickel a gallon. We're in the oil business, or the CNG business, anyway. And I had a chance to speak to the leadership tomorrow, annual meeting. What a great class of young leaders this was, learning about our community and about how to make it better and how to improve the community. On Saturday, I held my Meet the Mayor event at the Mariners Library, had the chance to talk to neighbors and residents in that area who are concerned about some specific issues, and we're following up on that. And then because I don't have enough meetings to go to, I've been elected to the Board of Directors of the Orange County Division of League of Cities. And one of the things we're going to be focusing on there is how to make the League of Cities a better advocate for protecting cities against the kind of revenue diversions that the state of California has been perpetuating on us over the course of last year. And then just to make everybody aware that tomorrow, there'll be a very special event about art in public spaces. And that's an important and timely topic in our city, because we have great opportunities now to develop new public art. So, at 5:30, beginning at the Orange County Museum of Art, there'll be a reception, moving on to a lecture at the Central Library at 7:00 p.m., featuring Alexis Smith and Mary Bebe and I. It's free, free to those who come, a suggested donation of $10, and I encourage everyone to come out and learn about public art and how it can be used to make our community better. We'll now move on to the consent calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 14, and supplemental items S16 and S17 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Does anyone have any items that'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Selich?
I have none.
Mr. Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen?
None.
Councilmember Gard- Bagel?
None to pull, but I did want to note on S17, it's a very substantial increase on legal expenses that, you know, if these legal cost increases continue, we're really going to blow out the budget. So, I want to express my concern. Obviously, we have to pay the bills. The service has been rendered. But again, you know, runaway legal costs are no way to run a city, so that would be my concerns.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
I have a correction to the minutes on the study session, volume 59, page 468, item number three, in the second paragraph. I'm quoted as saying she suggested conducting a Shero's pilot program on one of the roads listed as the focus area. Actually, as far as the Shero's, it was that the city traffic engineer develop criteria for a Shero's test program.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
And I have none, other than to note on item four, which is our supplemental agreement with the lifeguards, that I've talked before with our fire employees about the importance of partnership of working, of our employees working with the city to reduce the costs, particularly as they relate to public employee pensions. The fire department has stepped up for that, the fire employees, and here we see the lifeguard employees, lifeguard management stepping up also, and putting a major contribution into the pension fund. And I just wanted to note for the record how much that's appreciated, not only by the city council, but I think by the taxpayers in the city. Mr. City Manager, do you have any items to pull?
No, sir.
Does anyone in the audience have any items on the consent calendar they would like to discuss? Yes, sir? Which item? Number 12, okay. Are there any other items? All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar items 1 through 14, plus item S16 and item S17, with two exceptions. One, I want to note my abstention, because I was not at the last meeting, so my abstention on the minutes. And secondly, to pull item number 12.
Second.
Okay, yes, sir? All right, we're going to bring up item 12 as soon as we vote on the rest of the balance here. It'll come right up. Hold it for discussion. Right. Okay, so we've pulled it for discussion. All right? You've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Is there any person in the audience who wishes to speak on an item on the consent calendar, not item 12? All right, seeing none, please?
Mr. Mayor, I guess we should also note the amendment to the minutes.
And the amendment to the minutes. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll now bring up item number 12. Please come to the podium, sir.
So, for the folks at home, item 12 is a street tree designation for Heliotrope in Corona Del Mar.
Good evening, council.
Please state your name, please, for the record.
Certainly. My name is Mark Lyneum, resident at 226 Heliotrope. And on May 4th, I attended the Parks, Parks, Beach and Recreation Commission's meeting, and there was a unanimous decision to approve and forward this onto you, the council. But as a resident of Heliotrope, and having a home that has a view of the ocean, and noting that the streets of the village have had designated trees on each and every street, and our street years ago was designated to have pine, I believe a black pine, and the trees have had a hard time in dealing with the years, and just have gotten quite ratty. So, I understand the city's desire. Actually, I guess there were some issues about a house being destroyed with one of the trees falling. So, I understand the desire to try to get a tree that's a little easier to deal with. But as a homeowner that's purchased a home that does have an ocean view, my desire and concern, my family, my wife and my daughter's concern would be, obviously, to be able to see the water. And the choice of trees, there are three trees, and all the streets have a individual tree, if I'm not mistaken, designated to that street. And now, there's a decision, perhaps, to decide on multiple trees on a single street. I'm sure it'll look nicer in the fact it'll be cleaner, but I'm concerned that it'd be a single tree, I would hope, and also a tree that would allow a background of blue with perhaps a foreground of green, and not just a big blob of mess. Two of the trees are quite, potentially quite thick, and my concern, obviously, is for the city, is the financial issue, is that maybe it's a little easier to deal with. One of the trees is a palm tree, and it might be a cheaper tree to deal with over time as far as trimming and addressing. So, my desire as a homeowner in the area is to consider the palm tree as a single choice nearest the water, and if you decide on multiple trees, at least the trees closer to the water do not block the view of the homes as much as the other two trees would. That's my desire.
Dave, do you know if the decision, I know in the past, I live in Corona Del Mar, I have beautiful eucalyptus trees on my street, but I think we, Don, didn't we move away from the single tree? Was your, at your motion in the city to have a choice of trees?
Mark's going to come up too, Councilmember Gardner.
I believe the current plan, essentially, that was adopted, was pretty much a single tree type situation with some options in areas, but Mark can probably expand on that a little bit.
May I just add one thing before I say this? It's just that if there is a choice of, and a decision to have multiple trees, if the trees closest to the water could be a thinner tree than the ones further away, that's all.
Well, that was my second question, was if we do have a choice of trees, is there going to be, all right, let's start with one. Is there going to only be one tree, or are there going to be three trees?
No, yeah, I think there's a little confusion. It's one tree per site, not multiple trees per site. So, I think, because it came up, no, I know.
Okay.
I think you understand it, but it came up at the commission where someone said, so we're going to have three different trees per house, per lot. And I just want to say it, yeah, I just want to say, so it's clear, it's one tree. Yeah, the idea is to give residents a choice, and Councilmember Webb did bring this up quite some time ago, maybe a couple of years ago, when we were discussing the issue of different species of trees in a neighborhood. Number one, to give people the choice, because not everybody wants a palm tree. In fact, in this case, when we met with the residents, a lot of residents were very much opposed to the palm tree, because they missed the canopy that the pine trees provided. So, we run into that canopy versus view issue, and that's what we, when we decide or recommend these trees, that's what we're dealing with. The trees that we've selected, these three, or at least the two non-palm trees, are trees that we can thin out and keep what we think are low enough that it will provide, much as Mark said, the residents said, that will give that green in the forefront and a view of the blue or the ocean beyond the tree. So, you know, we're trying to work with the neighborhood, we're trying to provide some of the canopy and shade and protect the views, but it's a challenge.
Will it be General Services that lays it out, or will the resident have a chance to say, well, I would really prefer a palm tree in front of my house?
The resident will have that choice. Once it's the three that we designate, if that happens tonight, the resident can say, hey, based on my house and the front yard area, I'd like to have the, you know, the palm tree, or the, you know, whatever it might be, one of the other choices.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this matter? Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name's Pat Varanacar, and I live on Heliotrope, 214, and right up from the beach. We've been there 20, 24 years. When we moved in, it was a beautiful street with pine trees coming across. But these trees were planted probably in the 20s when the streets were poured. They put in the subdivision, and you can see old pictures, and you can see the little different trees they put on each street. And 83 years later, obviously, these trees are no longer viable in this neighborhood. And the tree in front of our house is probably maybe 10, 20 years newer. There have been many kinds of pines on that street. I've kind of identified several of them, but they're not, I've yet to find any of the black pine on our street, but there's been, there are a couple of big five-needle pines. Those are the ones that were 80-some years old, that one fell over and the wind went into, on a house. It didn't destroy the house, it crunched the porch a bit, but that one was sick. Anyways, roots had been pruned so well on the sidewalk side and on the street side that it had lateral roots only, and when the wind went that way, it went that way. So, I could see, and they took out another one up on sea view, of the same type of tree. And they were not healthy trees anymore, but that's past their lifespan. But what I think, I don't like the idea of the tree trees they picked out. I think they're plastic-looking trees, they're not real. They've stuck two of them up on Coast Highway. I can see how motley that one, that Hong Kong orchid tree is. It's not a tree. I mean, it may as well be a plant, you know, a plastic plant. The one, the other one, the real, the tree tree one, the New Zealand Christmas tree, I don't know, it looks like a bottle brush, I'm trying to tell the truth. I think a better selection could be made. I mean, I realize, a tree that's going to get planted isn't going to bother anybody's view for probably the next 20 years. It's going, it's been that long since some of them, there were some replanted. So, I'm just hoping that we could maybe reconsider and come up with a tree that is a lovely tree, that the whole street can have, and it can have the charm of the village that it started out to be, because each tree, and a couple of the, eucalyptus seem to be tough. The two streets, the two or three streets with those seem to be still alive. Many of the streets have lost all their, all their trees, just because of age. No tree, I mean, we're not going to plant, you know, bristlecone pines, give me a break. I think these trees are good for probably 40 to 50 years, max. So, anyway, I'm just hoping that we could reconsider a pine tree or something, at least to have the whole street look the same and match, so it'll have some continuity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers, please come forward.
Thanks. My name is Frank Varanacar, and this is my wife that just spoke. I live at 214 Heliotrope. I've been in conversation with Ms. Gardner about a stop sign that I consider a dangerous situation, but that's another subject. At any rate, I have been in touch with John Conway, the urban forester, since February via email. I never have talked to him directly requesting that something be done in the 200 and 300 block of Heliotrope. We paid a small fortune for our home when we bought it in 1987. This tree was majestic with the canopy of pine trees, and like my wife said, they get old, they die. We get old, we die too, but we're replaced, okay? And I think the city has replacement plans for all of us and cars and trucks and the like, okay? We should have the same thing with the trees. The trees that they selected were, I kind of felt ram-rodded on us, because we got the meeting, we attended the parks meeting, and it was almost a foregone conclusion, these are the trees. This is the pine tree that they selected. This is the Hong Kong orchid tree, one of which is in front of Starbucks, which is a completely messy tree. And then, I got, take a look at this one, would you want this one in front of your house, the New Zealand Christmas tree? And the gentleman here, who I have not, Mark, I have not had the pleasure of meeting, but I've suggested to Mr. Conway that I would like to volunteer, as a committee of one, as a resident of the 200 and 300 block of Heliotrope. We have not had a tree replaced on our street in 20 years. To the south of me, there are two or three trees that have been replaced. None have been replaced on, north of the home that's immediately south at the corner of Heliotrope and Ocean, but every tree that's been taken out to the north of us, all the way up to the gully going across Bayside, has not been replaced. Now, we're taxpayers, too. On sea view, I've canvassed some of my neighbors, gee, what did you do? Did you call the city? No, the city just came in and replaced this tree. And I watched them, they've died, they've come in and taken that one out, put a new one in. On Heliotrope, are we second-class citizens? For one, the trees that they've selected are not conducive to the 200 and 300 block of Heliotrope, particularly this one, from a view standpoint. You don't have to have 20/20 vision to see that that is a huge canopy, and also a very messy canopy on that tree. So, I'd like to have some citizen input from the residents on Heliotrope. I still volunteer to canvass my neighbors, to work with the urban forester who I have been communicating with, an email, he finally delegated me to someone else. After many, many emails, I finally got a call, perhaps it was from the gentleman addressed you earlier, but it's not a solution yet. So, I would like to table this tree thing, but I would like to also move ahead with it in a judicious manner, so that maybe by the next council meeting, we can have a consensus of opinion for the council to approve a tree for Heliotrope. The three trees are definitely not a good solution. If all of you were residents of Heliotrope, and you all selected a different tree, it's going to look terrible. One of the charms of the Village of Corona Del Mar is that we've had the flower streets and the trees, and I have a neighbor that lives on the other side of Bayside, and I guess there's an agenda now, they want to change the pine trees on those sides. On that side, the north side of Bayside Drive, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but we need to have some communication with the urban forester, some community input, and just not have a green notice come in the mail and say, okay, there's going to be a meeting at the parks, these are the trees we recommend, it's unanimous, so that's why it's here in front of the city council tonight, because with no, we had some comments up there, but it was comments and questions, but no... it was comments and questions, but no, no input from the citizens. And we're the taxpayers, we're paying for the trees, and we're paying to live there.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Are there any other speakers on this matter? All right, seeing none, let me bring it back to the council. Councilmember Gardner.
Mark, at the meeting, who makes the, I assume it's John that determines trees? I mean, I have to say that I agree that the Hong Kong Orchid, they look awfully peaked, so many of them around town, and we keep planting them. I know that was the tree selected by the bid, along with the palms, but I, and I know that we have to inject them with all sorts of things, so I've been myself surprised. I don't like to overrule a commission, though, that has considered these things, so I just wondered what sort of, how do we get to these, these choices, and were there only three choices presented, or what kind of discussions took place?
Yeah, there were three choices, only three choices presented to the commission, but that, we just don't come up with it the day before. What we do, we do a site visit, John, Ann, and Dan, both certified arborists, will do a site visit of that neighborhood, and they take, and the first thing they look at is the growth space in the Parkway, in the Right of Way. The problem with the, and it wasn't the, the black pine, it was actually the Monterey pine, the problem was, years ago when they planted these, it was a great tree, as this gentleman said, you know, it'll be twenty years before we have to worry about it. We don't wanna do a set something up for future generations of directors to have to deal with these issues. The trunk on these Monterey pines has outgrown the growth space, so we look at that, we look at the view issue. We wanna select trees that we can keep trimmed, that we can thin out, that we can, not top, but that we can keep short enough. Heliotrope takes quite a rise as you get further away from the water, so if we can keep the trees trimmed and shortened, we can, we feel that we can maintain that view for the residents. So we look at all those things. And the arborists come up with these three recommended choices, all the way from the palm, to the Christmas tree, to, you know, to the other choice. We explained that to the commission, we did notice in excess of sixty residents, sixty units, and we had, I believe, four homeowners show up to the commission meeting. We did get input, we got phone calls, we received phone calls on these three trees that were supportive of them. So, you know, we balance all of that, and we bring it forward. We think they'll do well. But, you know, if the, if the council feels that there might be other options out there, we can certainly take a look.
I don't feel like, as I say, I don't like to second-guess the commission that's considered something, and I don't like to second-guess our, our staff, experts, I'm not an arborist. And I have, this is the only complaint I've gotten. Everybody else, I assume that Mark Lyman is going to be happy because he will, can get his palm tree, or at least not unhappy. So, I don't see any reason to delay this unless there's someone else that has concerns.
I don't mind, I don't mind second-guessing him. I actually kinda think it is ridiculous to have three different street trees, I mean, the whole idea is to have some type of, I hate to say uniformity, but some type of a theme for the neighborhood, and, you know, I live actually to a street, not even in Newport Beach, it's in Orange, that I go down frequently. And it's a beautiful camp, they're all the same tree, beautiful canopy of trees, and I, every time I go down that street, I think, God, what a beautiful street this is, and it's not in the best area of Orange either, but it really improves that block, and, I don't know, three trees, and they're so different as well. I mean, it's not even like they sort of complement each other, I mean, they're three entirely different trees, basically. So, I have no problem with telling them to go back and coming back with a different plan, but I'll leave the motion to you.
Those are probably ficus trees in Orange that you're referring to.
They're not ficus, they're actually deciduous trees, and they're-
Oh, okay.
And they drop their leaves.
If we adopt this tonight, as those particular three trees, is there a program that we're gonna go through and remove all of the pine trees? Are we only gonna remove them when they're diseased?
They're only going to, that's an excellent question. They're only going to be removed if they, they need to be, if they're, if they're a danger to the neighborhood, or if we get another windstorm, it'll probably be another couple of trees to replace. We're not taking any out, other than for those reasons.
I, I agree with Nancy about, the Hong Kong Orchid looks awfully puny, and I've seen them not only on Coast Highway, but you have them in Corona shores, Kamala shores, I mean, and several other places that, and Highlands, if I remember correctly. Whereas, a pine is a tree tree, is what I look at it. Some of these other are just kinda decorative trees, and I, I too agree that the PB and R Commission is our advisors on this, but sometimes the type of trees that are offered, how do I tactfully put this, are very, very maintenance-friendly and may not necessarily be as pretty as they could be, from the standpoint of really nice-looking trees in five or ten years. So, I'm gonna leave this up to Nancy as far as which direction she's gonna go.
If I could also comment, because, you know, I'd be frankly more concerned that the maintenance with the bottle-brush-type tree, with the stuff falling out, I don't know that it does, but it certainly looks like it would be sort of heavy maintenance. The commission was apparently given three trees and say, "Here they are." I mean, it's not like they made a choice, it sounds like in terms, from a variety of trees. So I should ask the question, when you say if you'd like us to look at other trees, are there in fact other trees that would work adequately well here?
We don't think as well as the three we recommended.
Out of all the trees in the world? Or all the trees-
You know, I, I may run down the list of all the trees-
That was suspicious. Out of all the trees that are potentially viable as candidates for city trees-
We thought these were, the city arborists recommended these three as the best trees for that neighborhood, given the growth space. If Monterey pines weren't subjected to disease, and there was sufficient growth space, we probably could go back to pine trees. But, the only thing we'd be doing by putting pine trees in is making future problems.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
Do we, you're gonna take trees out if they're sick regardless of what we do right now?
Absolutely.
Okay. So there's no necessity that if we don't do it today, we come back in two weeks to do it. I'd like to take the time just to have a chance to talk to some of the residents on Heliotrope and get their sense of it, because I know a lot of people don't go to meetings, and since I can walk by there, and I'll depend upon you to help me. You have my, my email and my phone number, so you can get in touch with me, and we'll do that, and just touch base with it and get, see what the neighborhood feels like.
Okay. Yeah, no, there, obviously, two weeks or a month is gonna make a difference.
Okay. So I would move to table this.
Second. Move to continue?
Continue for-
Continue it.
Probably two meetings rather than two weeks, so-
Okay, two meetings.
Is that reasonable, Mark? Second. All right, motion on the table to continue the item for two meetings. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
So you will contact me?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Oral reports from councilmembers on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, our Citizens Aviation Committee meets once a month, and on Monday, the airport made a presentation on our, on noise monitoring system, probably something we might wanna make available on our website. Everyone is in compliance, and the penalties if you violate, the standards are pretty severe. What I would also note is attendance at the meeting is growing, and I think in part due to airfare, they've been in the fight for a long time, longtime activists. While airfare is more recent to aviation issues, they've done an excellent job as far as keeping the issue current. So I think all of the information in the websites, and the activism and the advocacy has really built in a good citizens' corps. We are gonna have to renegotiate this in the not-so-distant future, so I think having residents activated is a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Without going into a whole bunch of details and acronyms, the Coastal A Water Quality Committee is looking into a number of issues where there are unfunded mandates from the state, and will be forwarding suggestions to the council for letters to various agencies to avoid those.
Thank you. Councilmember Webb?
Again, on the Aviation Committee, I think we also need to point out the Airport Working Group has been another active participant within the committee in addition to airfare, to where the two groups together are providing significant community input on all of the various different issues.
Absolutely, and appreciate your participation as well.
Councilmember Selish? Nothing? Councilmember Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Hen?
The Economic Development Committee met, and we had a presentation on the new draft zoning code, which I, I'm just thrilled at the prospect of being able to talk about it at council one day, and, but, all kidding aside, it's an extremely important document for the city. I would encourage all of our residents that have any sort of interest to make sure they try to attend some of the several forums, I guess, at which the zoning code will be discussed, has been and will be discussed. We do have an example here on the agenda tonight for, as an, as an example of the need to pay close attention to our zoning codes, and, so, anyway, I would encourage that.
Thank you. I have no items. We're now for public comments. Madam City Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anyone in the audience wish to make public comments on a matter not on the agenda, please come forward. Please state your name, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel. Mark Harlazzy, 115 East Bay Avenue. I'm here to talk about the Underground Assessment District, AD 101, that is basically two years into the project and has encountered difficulty. And I'm here to ask this council's assistance in enforcing the contract between the City of Newport Beach and the Edison Company, because basically what's happened is that the Edison Company has become bogged down and has delayed this project and has not taken action to complete it. And we're at a critical stage here where we're encroaching on the summer season, which begins after Memorial Day. And traditionally and historically, the city has not allowed construction on public works projects to occur after Memorial Day. So, our slated completion date was always Memorial Day for this project, and that's what people had worked towards, and actually, I wanna make it very clear to everyone that all the residents have complied with everything that they've been asked to do to get this project done. This is not the normal assessment district where we have residents who have lagged behind, and we have a string of poles running up to one resident's house. We actually have residents who've done absolutely everything. This is strictly an Edison issue, where the Edison Company has known about an issue at Newport Landing for over one month, and they have taken no action to do anything about it. I understand from the Edison representatives that this issue at Newport Landing is a one-day job. And this one-day job that has not been done, no work has occurred in one month, is holding up the removal of the entire run of poles from Bay Avenue, all the way down Bay Avenue, East Bay Avenue, all the way to Adams, the entirety of the district. These are the main transmission line poles. There is one transformer behind Newport Landing that supplies that particular block of Newport Landing, which is Newport Landing, a parking garage, and a couple businesses. Edison Company made no provision to hook that transformer up to the underground system. So they need to do work next to Newport Landing, in that roadway adjacent Newport Landing, to tie in the underground system that we paid to provide, the underground conduits, to the existing underground system which carries forward towards Peninsula Point. There's no information that I know of that would explain the delay, okay? So we have a situation where we have a contract between the City of Newport Beach and the Edison Company, where the residents have provided the money through tax, through bonds, and the city has entered into this contract. We do not have legal standing to enforce this contract. Only the city can do that. So, what I'm here to ask for is for the city to embark through their legal department to enforce this contract, to make Edison take reasonable steps and reasonable diligence to complete this project in a timely manner, so that we're not stuck with these poles on Bay Avenue for another six months or more. We have no idea how long they'll be up. There's additional issue of potential contamination at Newport Landing. When they originally opened the ground up in January 2009 at Newport Landing, they ran into basically black oil that was in this, either, I don't know if it was current gas tank leaking, or it's old contamination, but in any event, there's contamination there. That caused them to move their vault location to the head of Adams Avenue. This tie-in work that they've been delaying-
Sure, your time is up, but let me, thank you. Let me ask Mr. Badham or our city attorney, do we have any comments or information on this matter?
That's the first I've heard, but I can speak with our project manager, Iris Lee, and see if we can come to some resolution with Edison. Yeah, I'm aware that there was an issue with the incomplete plans for this project that did cause a delay because of this need to hook up Newport Landing. It wasn't clear to me that it's been a month, that nothing has happened. I know that our public works department is aware of it, and so I would just encourage the department to take whatever action they need to take to get Edison to do what they're supposed to do in this situation. I will say that this underground district, more than any other one that I'm aware of, has moved forward very rapidly toward conclusion because of the residents' special effort to make that happen, as well as the city staff activity, and so I'm just hopeful that we can get it taken care of quickly. I don't know, though, that the topping of the poles really needs to wait until after the summer season to proceed anyway, and so maybe we can also look at that, too.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment, we're gonna go to public hearings. We have a scheduled public hearing tonight on the Beachfront General Plan Amendment and Local Coastal Program Coastal Land Use Plan Amendment. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. City Manager?
This is Mayor and Councilmembers. McKenna Nova from the Planning Department will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I have a few slides I'd like to run through just to introduce you to the vicinity and the project. Then if we have questions, we can go from there. The project site's located on Peninsula Point. The current use consists of two, it's a private tennis club consisting of two tennis courts. This is a closer look, there are two private streets, L Street to the west and East Bay Avenue to the north. Also, M Street beyond several residences to the, to the east. The current general plan is designated PR, Parks and Recreation. The zoning, the zoning designation, this is actually the Coastal Land Use Plan, zoning designation is currently R1, single-family residential, so you can see there's a, there's a inconsistency between the land use designations. The Coastal Land Use Plan is also, is also PR, Parks and Recreation. The applicant proposes to change the land use to RSD and RSDB for the Coastal Land Use Plan to allow for single-family residential development. The properties were previously designated for residential development, that was changed on the general plan 1989, based on the existing use, or to increase the Parks and Recreation designation throughout the city. This is the existing site plan, there are six legal parcels on the, on the project site. There are five shown here, the garden area is actually its own parcel that was subdivided through a parcel map. This is the conceptual development plan. The zoning code, if the land use change is approved today, would allow for a maximum of five dwelling units on the project site. That would require a tract map for the approval of this conceptual development plan. There's also mitigated negative declaration for your review and adoption this evening based on the conceptual development plan of five dwelling units. If you have questions at this time, I'd like to-
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Webb?
I noticed that in this particular conceptual plan, the square footage that you show for each one of those lots includes the private streets. In other words, and if I, my calculation is correct, twenty percent of the land is private streets, and if you excluded the private streets, like for instance, if I'm developing my house, I happen to live on a public street, I can't include the space that's in the street in front of my house, is my square foot area. That's what- That's what you're doing here. If you exclude the public street areas that are in existence, you would only have 21,000 square feet left, 21,600 square feet. And therefore, in order to get your 5,000 square foot lots, which I believe is what our general plan says is the guide that we're supposed to use, you'd only be able to get four lots. And so from my standpoint, I don't see how we can make the findings necessary to make a general plan amendment that would allow for lots that are less than 5,000 square feet.
Our standard practice does not exclude private streets from the calculation for buildable area. We do take the lot area lest the required setbacks and then calculate the buildable area and the maximum floor area limit from that.
I recognize that, but like, for instance, if you go up into the Newport Coast area, those are private streets. And those lot sizes do not include the private street. I think that what you have is a very small area here, and it's convenient perhaps to show the private streets as part of the lots. But I feel that we're in a very dense area. And for us to go from a recreational use to a more dense use of five houses, but if those houses were on 5,000 square feet apiece, I mean the lots-
The properties were previously designated residential, and the current property lines are where they're shown.
I realize that that's what the previous designation was, but we made a change. We made a conscious decision to make that change, and it was a Parks and Recreation use. And we're now going back. Yes, the track map that was originally done, and that was probably approved establishing the six existing lots, was probably done originally back in the 1910s or '20s or whatever, and we had totally different development standards. And I realize that the smaller lots are more likely to be similar to their surrounding area, but we now have a new general plan, and we've taken a pretty firm line that that general plan says we need to have 5,000 square foot lots. So I don't see how we can count streets as a part of the square footage in those lots.
There was another way to configure the lots to provide the required 5,000 square feet for each lot. However, the Planning Department and Public Works decided that that was not the optimal solution here in order to limit driveway access from East Baboah Boulevard. So that it is possible, should they come forward with a development plan, to provide that 5,000 square feet. However, it wasn't the recommended solution for this conceptual development plan.
Mr. Leepo, somebody wants to add to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, David Leepo, Planning Director. A couple of things, and I understand Mr. Webb's concerns because the Planning Commission talked about those very things. In fact, the one item, for example, about the secret document where they said, "Well, we want to take that section out because we want to be very clear that there's going to be additional review before any lots are subdivided, any map is approved, or any development plan is approved." If you remember, we previously had a council policy that said if you're going to submit a general plan amendment, you need to submit a conceptual site plan. That was in effect when this plan was developed, and that was why it was proposed. Secondly, because currently the policy's been changed, that's no longer a requirement. Secondly, the current zoning ordinance, which is referenced through the subdivision code as far as how you determine minimum lot size, current zoning code says 5,000 minimum lot size. The draft zoning code provides some flexibility so you can prepare lot sizes and densities consistent with the surrounding area in cases like this where there are older subdivisions. More importantly, there's no map being approved at this time. It's simply the change of zoning to match the land use plan. The Planning Commission will subsequently see any proposal to re-divide that property.
I realize there's no map being proposed here. However, every document that we read through and almost every recommendation refers to five lots. So that if I were to go through and look at this document five years from now, I'm going to assume that the city council approves something knowing that five lots was going to go in there, and the people that are at that particular time are going to say, "Well, gee, you promised us five lots, and here it is in your document." So that I know that as far as I'm concerned, I would make a recommendation a little bit later on, after we've discussed this a little further, that we approve the general plan amendment subject to there being no more than four lots, but that's later on.
Mr. Mayor, we can put in there a condition, again, technically you can't add a condition to legislative action such as this, but for our records and electronic files, we could add a provision, a resolution that provides whatever direction you choose as far as maximum number, if that's what your decision is.
I had the same concerns. It was, I don't know what was previously approved, but what was proposed didn't seem to mean anything or needed special conditions. And I understood in reading it that I wasn't approving this configuration specifically, but I have the same concerns as Councilman Webb, that we are establishing a record that will allow someone to come back and say, "No, you said five."
The reason we went ahead with the conceptual development plan for five units is because that provides the maximum for the environmental impact analysis so that we could look at the air quality, the development impacts for the maximum, so that that would be covered. However, if you feel that fewer units are required, that would be addressed through the track map.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions for staff? Mr. Selich?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment that in my time on the Planning Commission, I remember at least two properties like this that have come up to the Planning Commission for track maps, and the Planning Commission routinely approved lots that were less than 5,000 square feet under the rationale that they were similar in size and shape to the surrounding subdivision pattern. So we're not here to prejudge what the ultimate development of this property is going to be, but I would certainly oppose to, even to just putting it on the record that we're going to limit it to four lots. That should stand on its own at the time the track map comes forward. It's clear to me that this is just here for illustrative purposes, for determining the maximum impacts in the environmental documents, so I would be opposed to Councilman Webb's suggestion.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen?
Yeah, I completely agree with Councilmember Selich. This is just an illustration. It's just a demonstration of what the maximum development could be. And at the time that a map is proposed, that's the time for the council that's then sitting to decide whether or not that's appropriate, and it may well conclude that it's not, and not approve five lots. Perhaps four. Maybe they will approve five. I don't know. I don't think it's appropriate to prejudge that issue because we do not have an item on the agenda to make that decision. And so I would also oppose a motion. And in fact, as long as I've got the mic, I know we need to have public comment, but I'll still, I'll move that we approve the item as submitted. I feel that, I feel badly about this because I think this is really a case of a longstanding inadvertent error, as much as anything in terms of the designation of this property. And this applicant is going to spend a large amount of money to get that corrected. I feel badly about that. I do think, though, we need to move forward with this.
There's a-
I don't-
There's a-
Motion, Ed.
There's a motion and a second, and we will get to public comment here on the applicant, but-
Yeah, I just, I don't disagree with that, but I would like to ask the city attorney, are you in agreement that by approving this, we are not in any way locking ourselves into what's proposed in terms of development, if at some point they want to develop it?
Yes, you're not approving the conceptual development plan. It was prepared in order for you to consider the mitigated negative declaration, which you have for each night, just the legislative action.
Thank you.
I see the applicants represented today. Can I invite either the applicant or his representative if they'd like to make some comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dennis O'Neill, and we support the motion.
Okay.
I'm here this evening along with Mr. Beecham, representing him on his application to amend the general plan and the local coastal land use plan to make it consistent with the zoning. Perhaps it was an inadvertent error that occurred back in 1988 that was picked up in the 2006 general plan update. Regardless, we believe that we've applied for the appropriate procedures to bring this into consistency in our hearing. We attended the hearing at the Planning Commission, and we encourage your support of the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Mr. Beecham would like to make a brief statement, and then we'll reserve an opportunity if granted by the mayor to respond to any public comments, should there be any.
Thank you. Mr. Beecham, would you like to come forward?
Thank you for taking up this matter. It's very important to me. I lived at 2605 Way Lane in Cronedale Mar for about another month before I come over to the Baboah Peninsula. This property has been owned by my family, who moved from Babo Island in the mid-1950s. You know, my dad loved the property because it had a tennis court behind it, and that was all great, except there was nobody to play tennis with, other than his own kids, and we weren't very good. So in talking with people around him, he kind of got the idea of maybe doing a little tennis club. So he bought his neighbor's property, which included a tennis court, and put together the Peninsula Point Racquet Club in 1963. I grew up with that place. The place is absolutely extremely special to me, pardon my voice. And the conceptual development plan is really not very important to me at this point. Clearly, I'm in applying for amendment to the general plan. I'm trying to retain my R1 zoning and preserve the real estate value as well as I can. The Peninsula Point Racquet Club is, I think, a pretty wonderful amenity for the Peninsula Point people and others. And there is nothing in this that, at least as far as I'm concerned, to change that. But to make the application, we had to do it in such a way that included a development plan. So I think that's really all I have to say, and thank you for-
I have a question.
Sure.
I went to school with Dick Beecham. What's the relationship?
That would be my older brother.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. All right, seeing no unwilling to speak, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back in. A motion, second, is made on the floor. Are there any further comments by the council or staff?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Under the findings that we're supposed to be making under the general plan amendment under the resolution, on page three of 15, handwritten page 12, even though we aren't supposed to discuss numbers, it says the amendment in the public interest pursuant to so on and so forth, this amendment, or the amendment would allow for five units, which contribute to the city's assigned share of moderate. And I think that we've been, our staff reports are being very specific that we're allowing five units, and, yes, we're not approving a parcel map. If five units were, or the five was out there, if it just says that we are allowing four dwelling units, which would contribute to the city's assigned share of the moderate and above, that would be fine, but if we not, I don't think we should be referring to the number of units since there isn't a parcel map or track map in front of us.
We could say additional dwelling units because the point we're trying to make in this finding is that we're doing something to achieve our housing goals and leave out the number.
If the amendment truly says that we are not coming up and we're not allowing five units, then I can support it. If we are allowing five units with this, then I can't support it.
Well, the city attorney said we're not allowing, we're not making a determination as to the number of units. Is that correct?
Yes. What about Sharon's comments?
I agree with Sharon's.
They say additional as opposed to five. Would that be acceptable to the people making the motion in the second?
Sure, it's okay with me if we change the language in the staff report. As long as it doesn't prejudge any limitations that are not otherwise allowable under the designation that's being requested.
I think Don's making a mountain out of a molehill, but I'll go along with it.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, I think we will vote on the motion as made by Mayor Pro Tim Hen. I understand that there was some suggested language to the staff report that was accepted, although I don't think that's part of the motion.
No, the change was to the resolution.
To the resolution.
I was trying to vote instead of speak. I'll agree to that amendment to the resolution, again, so long as it does not provide any limitations not otherwise allowable under our-
Compromise breaking out all over the place. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Motion for reconsideration.
A motion for reconsideration on any item taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Is there a motion for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, we have some adjournments tonight. I'm going to read a couple, and then Mayor Pro Tim Hen is going to read one. First, we're going to adjourn in memory of Anita Ferguson, who passed away Sunday evening at Hope Hospital. She was the widow of former state assemblyman Gil Ferguson, who served in the assembly from 1984 to 1994. Gil passed away in 2007. Anita and Gil met while attending USC, were married for nearly 60 years. Anita was active in conservative politics, will be remembered for her service to the Baboah Bay Republican Women Federated, her work on husband Gil's campaigns, and for helping him to run the conservative group Principles of Her Politics, an organization he founded in 1984. She is survived by her four children, sons Jay, Darrell, and Mark, daughter Rhonda Priestley, nine grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. We are all very sorry to hear of Anita's passing. Mike Dexter is a former City of Newport Beach employee who passed away on May 15. Mike served the city as a building inspector from December 1983 until his retirement in June 2009. Mike will be fondly remembered for his friendly and engaging spirit. He enjoyed being involved in city events, country dancing, playing video poker, or playing or watching sports with his coworkers and friends. Skiing, bowling, and playing softball are one of his favorite pastimes. Mike is survived by his sons Bob and Justin, and he will be greatly missed by his colleagues and friends in Newport Beach. Mr. Hen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've, we sit through these memorials here at many council meetings, and I take them all very seriously and appreciate the families involved. This one's a little special to me. It's my mom, who passed away on May 8, 2010, the day before Mother's Day in Indianapolis. She survived by me and my older brother and my younger sister and a slew of grandkids and sons-in-laws and the three great-grandchildren. My mom was born on December 1, 1925, to a hardscrabble life, growing up in the Depression with no money and not much chance for a good life. She did have a good life. She was married to my dad for 54 years before he passed away 12 years ago. My mom was a loving mother and wife, and she deeply cared for her family. She loved golf. She was an accomplished artist. We've got lots of examples of that around our home. And she created and maintained a beautiful home for our family. It was beautiful not just to look at or be in. It was beautiful in more ways than that. She did everything she could with my dad and with his support to make it a wonderful place to be and to make sure that we had a better life than she and my dad did growing up. Sometimes they did that to their own detriment, spending money on presents and making special holidays that, with money that they really shouldn't have spent. But our home was always a place of refuge and safety for me and my brother and sister, and a place with unconditional love. That's a rare thing. Mom used to call me your sunny boy, and I'll always be that, I guess. I'm proud of that, actually, and I'll miss that. I would love to be able to still hear her say that rather than just remember it, but that's what I'll always be. I'm very sad she's gone, but I'm very glad that she's back reunited with my dad. I will miss them. I love them both completely. Before I close, I did want to make one other comment. I, this is sad in another context for me, in that my mom and dad were both members, card-carrying members of the Greatest Generation. Born and grew up in the Depression, won a World War on two fronts, survived the Depression to build the foundation of the greatest country on earth that they- Depression to build the foundation of the greatest country on earth that they've handed down now to us. I regret to see that generation pass. It's not a line that I really ever wanted to be at the head of, but now I am. I'm the senior member of my family in terms of generation. And I'm proud of that, and I accept that. And I also accept the idea that if I can only just do as well to acquit my life in the way that my parents have, and in the way that their generation has, for the benefit of us kids and our whole country, and I think the world, then I will have led a good life, and I'll strive to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.